So we'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Julie, please. You're muted. Julie, you're muted.
Sorry. Ms. Burchard?
Yes.
Mr. Buckkey?
Yeah.
Mr. Draco's?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion's approved and we will move on to public participation. And we have a number of comments this evening, so we're breaking those into two groups. And Jake will read the first group, if you would. Jake?
Yeah, do we normally start with? It is the board policy to read these part book participation statements, but there will be no response to them. And if there is any follow up actions needed, that will be noted.
Thank you.
So the first item is from Sandra Castro. Please continue to allow remote learning, even if you decide to return to face to face. Not all parents are ready for kids to go back to face to face learning. Thank you. The next is from Melissa Majeski. The teachers are doing an absolutely amazing job teaching our children. I cannot thank them enough for all their hard work and extra time learning how to teach in this new way. However, for my kindergartner and third grader, this is no way to learn, especially the younger ones. They need to be in the classroom with their peers, learning not over a computer. My children love school and have not complained about this format. However, they desperately want to be with their friends and teachers again with some sense of normalcy, especially the youngest of our kids. Please consider sending our kids back to school ASAP. Thank you. The next submission is from Candace Amy. Or E-Mine. I understand we are concerned for our children's safety, but this is not working. This virtual is not a solution for lower elementary children at all. They are not benefiting from this type of learning at all. Also, I am a parent of a kindergartner, second grader, and fourth grader. It is very difficult to manage all three students with different schedules and breaks all in the same household. They are not all independent readers or learners. It makes it very difficult for me to manage them. Also, the IT issues are too much. We are not prepared for virtual learning and I think my lower elementary children would be better off either having, not having school at all, or going just two days a week. Please help. This is not okay. There must be another solution. This current plan does not have my young children's well being in mind. They are not able to get the education they need virtually, despite the teacher's very, very best effort. The next submission is from Anita Brunkhorst. In regards to remote school, while I understand the reasoning we are doing this, and while I would love to send my kindergartner back to face to face, something needs to be done with the daily schedule. She's on Zoom for 30 minutes, then off, then on, then off. If we can get the plans for the week and try to condense the day so we aren't tied to the clock of when to log back on, she doesn't need to go from 8:15 to 2:40 four days a week. Give us the lessons, plans ahead of time so we can do it more at our own pace. Maybe do it 8:15 to 11, then call it a day and they can do their independent practice. Just a thought from a working mom at home with another toddler running around. The next submission is from Pepper Young. I've been pleasantly surprised with week one of virtual school. I have two kids in kindergarten, one in fourth grade and one in sixth grade. I have also helped a few LO students with their virtual school throughout the week. All of the children have been successful in attending their Zoom meetings and submitting their assignments. The students in fourth grade had some issues with the school laptops, but we thankfully have been able to work around the issues and found solutions. My kids haven't complained at all about their classes. Thanks for keeping our kids safe. The next submission is from Heather Shu. Please allow at least Kate through second grade back to face to face instruction in the very near future. Remote learning is not working for them. This is torture as a parent to witness my daughter's struggle and get extremely frustrated. The next submission is from Katie Thomas. Please send at least elementary back. This is not working for anyone. These poor teachers are trying their best, but online does not work for small children. I am pretty confident you are wasting everyone's time by doing virtual for this age group. My son is six. He cannot tell time yet. And you expect him to complete assignments on an app, log in and out of Zoom multiple times a day, and know what he's supposed to be doing at certain times, when again, he can't tell time. And I'm sorry, but Dragon Den is a joke. My son came home today with his hair cut down to a scalp all over his head. This was not a one second situation. This had to have happened over a lengthy period of time. When I asked the adult who was with him about it, she said, oh yeah, I stopped him from cutting his eyelashes though. What? I'm spending $200 a week on this and you aren't even watching them. And when I asked my son why some of his work wasn't done, he said he didn't know how to log on and no one was making sure he's logged on correctly. He was logged into someone else's music class. The entire thing is wrong in so many ways. It is completely unfair to your teachers, your staff, your students, and your parents. Please send them back. They need to learn. They need friends, interactions with other adults, and hands on, in person teaching. The next submission is from Jennifer Ritz. I'm a parent to eighth grade and 10th grade students in our district. Although I would support them both returning to an in-person school environment prior to November, I am writing in support of an aggressive plan to return K through five students as soon as possible. Weighing the health risks of reopening K to 12 schools in fall 2020 against the educational risks of providing no in-person instruction, school districts should prioritize reopening schools full time, especially for grades K through five and students with special needs. Young children in particular will be impacted by not having in-person learning and may suffer long-term academic consequences if they fall behind as a result. In grades K through three, children are still developing the skills to regulate their own behavior, emotions, and attention, and therefore struggle with distance learning. Furthermore, this K through five age group is primarily at home with their families and small group of friends in their neighborhood. Therefore, they are more or less still tightly quarantined to a small cohort of people, making them at less risk of coming in contact with the virus. This scenario makes them a safer group of students to return to the classroom with less risk of spreading the virus. Lastly, though there are many parents fortunate enough to work from home or be 100% available to their students during the school day, it is a significant hardship for a fair number of parents who are trying to juggle their full-time jobs while trying to provide a supportive at-home learning environment for their children. Furthermore, teachers chose their profession for a reason. They have the passion, talent, and skills to educate our children beyond anything that can be replicated over a computer in a remote setting. At the past meeting, Mr. Kirby cited that 52% of the staff that responded to the survey about returning to the classroom did not feel safe or ready to do so. I would challenge the administration to survey the staff once more. My bet is that after just one week of remote learning facing the technological difficulties and challenges trying to engage students through a video, the majority of teachers would vote differently and support returning to an in-person teaching environment as soon as possible. Every one of you on the board has been to a store, or church, or a restaurant, or even a park, and observed our little people wearing masks and social distancing. Our little people are sponges and quickly adjust to their environment. Give them the credit they deserve. Let them return to school wearing masks and practicing social distancing and get the in-person education they desperately need. When the return of K through five students is deemed successful, the district can then take the next steps to return the six to 12 students back to the classroom prior to the original November timeframe. The next submission is from Lysandra Leon. I think it is very important for our children to return to in-person learning as soon as possible. These kids are suffering and so are the parents. It is very difficult for everybody besides the fact that it is nearly impossible for children to learn the things that they should from home. My son has ceramics for God's sakes and it's nearly impossible for him to do when he needs to do. Besides the fact that it is very frustrating and inconvenient for everyone involved, especially working single parents. My 10th grader and third grader are hurting. It's not fair and they deserve a proper education. The next submission is from Pam Dennison. Please consider letting our children go back to school. As hard as our teachers and parents are trying, it is not working. Could we even try half the students on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and the other half Tuesday and Thursday, and then rotate it the next week? You have less students in classrooms, but they are learning a bit better. The next submission is from Jennifer Thompson. After watching my kid in virtual school for almost a week, I can tell she is bored and not as engaged as she would be in a classroom. She has expressed the desire to be back learning in her classroom. The longer this goes on, the further I think she will be behind. The next one is from, the next submission is from Jamie Franczek. Data says schools have been opening safely, no big outbreaks. We are also losing a big bunch of students and their money to private schools. The mental health issues our students are having is way worse than coronavirus. Students with special needs, students who are in bad homes, parents who need to work. It's past time to open up the schools. Be a leader and open up Lake Orion schools. It can be done safely and other districts are proving it.
All right. Thank you, Jake.
And then there's one more from, oh, nope, that was not a submission. So. Turn it over to Burget.
We're good. All right. Burget, would you pick it up from there, please?
Pick it up. I have about 17 to get through.
All right.
Now we can do it. Our first one's from Amber Hagadon and she says, first, I want to thank the teachers for their hard work and understanding. I have two children in Lake Orion schools. A kindergartner who is currently working from a very old tablet because we thought she was going to be given a device, but found out the day of, you don't have any left. She can barely hear and gets kicked off constantly. Seesaw isn't even an option for her unless she waits until after school, which was the only option we were given because a seven hour day on a computer isn't long enough for a five-year-old. I also have a third grader with an IEP. Neither of my girls can sit on their devices without my constant help. This has left me to make a choice because my choice is taken away. I now have to choose which one of my children needs an education the most. Is it my kindergartner who is learning her letters and numbers, beginning reading and writing? Or my third grader with an IEP who is struggling every day to focus, get caught up, and not fall further behind? By taking away in-person and virtual and only offering remote learning, you have left me with no other option. I will have to pull one of my kids. Which one do I pull? Which one of my kids deserves or needs an education more? I am fortunate enough to be a stay-at-home mom. I can't imagine if I was working too. I wouldn't even have this option. The past few days, I've seen my friends cry. I have cried. Worst was watching my girls cry. They want to learn, but this isn't working for them. They cannot learn this way. I understand you feel it is safer if they stay home. I would never want to put anyone at risk, especially my children or any child. This is why I signed up for virtual, working at your own pace and my children actually getting the help, attention, and education they both deserve and need in a timeframe that is realistic for us. The teachers are trying, the students are trying, the parents are trying. This isn't working. Maybe it is for some, but it is not for some. Which some matters most? The working parents? The single mom? The students? Students who need someone there all the time but have no one? Two parents who have to pay someone else to help? The teachers who have their own children? The working parent who has to work to support their family? I understand there is no perfect way. There never has been. However, I refuse to believe there is not a better way. We can do better than this. For our children, parents, teachers, staff, and community, we have to do better. The next one is from Lindsay Baranowski. She says, as an employee in public health, I understand the seriousness of COVID-19. A lot of progress has been made in understanding the virus and how it's treated. In Michigan, we've done a good job at containing the spread. However, this virus is not going away anytime soon. With the progress that's been made, shouldn't we be thinking outside the box on how to live with the virus? The Oxford School District has done a good job of creating an in-person option while living in a Corona environment with strict PPE and social distancing and sanitizing protocols, and it seems to be working for them. Why isn't the Lake Orion School District doing the same? The next one is from Nicole Stinson. Nicole says, good afternoon. I'm a mother of two happy Lake Orion Dragons. My daughter is in fourth grade and my son is in first. We've been very happy and proud to be part of our district and Carpenter Elementary School. I'm writing this letter today to express my concerns and hardships in regards to our school's recent switch to virtual learning. I realize that you believe you have made this decision in the best interest of our children, but I assure you, there have been far more detriments. Firstly, children have been proven to be unaffected by the coronavirus. I wonder what scientific evidence was used to make this decision? It is easy to see that most children do not have the comorbidities that people who have been afflicted with the disease have, such as COPD, heart disease, and diabetes. That being said, it is with no doubt a safe bet to say our children are not in danger by attending school. Oxford, Dryden, and many other local schools have decided to keep in-person learning for the benefit of their children. And if they can do it, so can we. If people want to keep their children at home, let them choose Dragon Virtual and let the elderly or at-risk teachers teach those kids or collect benefits. Secondly, the technology we have been given has not worked properly one day since the start of school last week. This creates extreme amounts of stress on both children and parents. I myself have had countless troubles navigating this new system and my children have been brought to tears many times out of frustration and worry of missing class. I appreciate their teachers' efforts, but they have had issues as well, learning and trying to help with the little training they have been provided. These stressful environments are breeding grounds for all kinds of mental and emotional trauma, as well as forms of abuse for some families, and this concerns me very much, as it should you. The likelihood of a child facing some type of abuse because of this far exceeds the risk of contracting COVID. Children have enough problems dealing with the stresses of peer pressure and normal school life. This is an unneeded addition to their stress levels and a detriment to their emotional development. Thirdly, my husband and myself, like many others, both work full-time jobs. We are preparing for in-school learning. We were preparing for in-school learning until three weeks before the start of school, when it was changed at the last minute. That did not give us enough time to arrange our home lives for the school year. We are unable to find sitters. We had to cancel jobs and we've lost income because of this. We have been forced to use Dragon's Den because we were too late to enroll our children in another local school or a private school. The cost of this program is horrendous. Our community pays taxes so kids can receive an education without draining their parents' bank account. I will have to spend almost $2,000 by the time November 4th comes around. Private academies cost that much in our in-class with teachers. We are paying for bus drivers to watch our children and I know that they are not receiving a large amount of money being brought in by this program, so why is the cost so high? Additionally, they have no experience dealing with tech issues. And though they are very nice people, they are not educators. I feel like I am being taken advantage of by our school system and I know many others feel the same way, but we have no alternative. In conclusion, I'm extremely disappointed in our district for seemingly caring about profits over our children. I know of the recent bills passed that incentivizes schools to do virtual learning or face funding cuts. I also know that Dragon's Den is bringing in way more money than it is spending. I feel like we have been shut out, not allowed to attend school board meetings that our tax dollars are paying for. Our voices have been silenced and I do not even feel confident that this letter will be addressed. This is not the type of district I have been proud to be a part of. Please stop this now and put our children first. The next one is from Ralph Hidragna. And he simply says, get our kids back in the classroom. Enough is enough. Let our voices be heard, not just your vote from the board. The next one is from Matt Majeski. Matt says, hello. I want to start by expressing my appreciation for all of the hard work that has been put to make virtual learning the best it can be these last two weeks. While it is a vast improvement from the spring, it still does not provide our younger learners what they need to grow academically and socially. We have three in the school district, six, third, and kindergarten. As they get younger, it gets harder and harder to execute virtual as in-person replacement. We are worried about our children's development. Based on the successful in-person executions across our county, we ask that you reassess the virtual-only decision. In-person with strict rules, protocols, and processes can be safely executed. Our kids need it. Thanks for listening. The next one is from Peggy M-E-I-G-H. I'm sorry, I probably mispronounced that. Peggy says, please start in-person schooling as fast as possible. I'm the grandma of three Weber Elementary students whose parents both work full-time. I'm the school monitor for most days. My grandchildren are not thriving at all in this format. I believe this is a huge fail. This format does not keep them attentive and we are losing valuable learning time. This is so hard on all, teachers, parents, students, and grandparents. I could go in with many examples of our fails during the day, but I'll spare you that. Get our children into in-person learning. Thank you for all your hard work. Peggy. This next one is from Nikki Stern. Nikki says, begin face-to-face learning as soon as possible. The virtual environment is not sufficient for learning and will put our kids at a disadvantage. The next one is from Elaine Bracken. Elaine says, please send our students back to school with face-to-face classrooms. Most of our kids need visual stimulation and encouragement. I'm seeing a great deal of anxiety and depression. The next one is from Emily Lyons. Emily says, please send our kids back to in-person school. School is supposed to be a fun learning experience. Every morning, my six-year-old daughter wakes up crying about having to sit in front of a screen all day for school. I want my daughter to have a positive outlook on school and virtual learning is not helping. The next is from Brenda Bowers. Brenda says, I live in LO district, tutoring second and fifth grader in another district. Credit to the teachers doing their best, but children are suffering educationally with remote learning. Kids need to be back in school. This next one is from Brittany Calso. Brittany says, good afternoon. Thank you for giving our Dragon community another opportunity to reflect on the current situation and provide comment. Most importantly, school board members, thank you for doing an often thankless job. I'm writing as a longtime stakeholder of the Lake Orion School District. Our family has several proud Lake Orion graduates and LOCs employees dating back to 1955. I say this to express our support and admiration of this district, which is why we chose to have our son continue the familial tradition and attend Lake Orion Schools as a proud Dragon. The unknown state of COVID-19 had several districts resort to remote learning. However, there are many surrounding districts that have offered in-person learning. It is my understanding that the parent survey regarding our students returning to the school year 2020, 2021 indicated that merely 1,500 families would choose online instruction in comparison to the majority of families that wanted face-to-face instruction. Aside from the severe technological issues amongst district families, a large problem with this online education is that it requires students to be self-disciplined. Many of these young children are still learning how to properly organize a folder. In addition, students must actively seek help from an adult, which is often a working parent. Online education makes it harder to maximize student learning outcomes because the resources that foster learning in face-to-face environments are diminished. School is not just a place for our children to receive an education. Our children attend school for life experiences and social-emotional growth. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, the importance of in-person learning is well documented and there is already evidence of the negative impacts on children because of school closures in the spring of 2020. Lengthy time away from school and associated interruption of supportive services often results in social isolation, making it difficult for schools to identify and address important learning deficits as well as child and adolescent physical or sexual abuse, substance abuse, depression, and suicidal ideation. We need to avoid any further negative impacts on our children. Imagine hearing a sweet nine-year-old boy say, I just want to see my friends and teachers and Mr. Weldon and Mr. Patrick. He and his neighborhood friends talk about how much they miss school daily. We will not act as an expert in this matter. However, the time to return to in-person learning needs to occur sooner than what was initially planned. Our son needs to be with his school family in person. Thank you for your consideration to expedite the return to school. Go Dragons. Brittany Avril Calso and Nathan Calso. The next one is from Amy Gamash and Amy says, for the mental, emotional, and physical health of our children, an in-person school option needs to be available as soon as possible. The next one is from Catherine Nelson and she says, school-aged kids need to learn face-to-face. Online will jeopardize their future. The next one is from William Skellinger. William says, please help me understand the scientific reasoning behind not allowing public spectators at outdoor marching band practice. A couple of weeks ago, I arrived about 30 minutes before the end of practice at the request of my daughter and I was promptly told that sitting at the very top of the bleachers outdoors or anywhere in the bleachers was prohibited. Instead, I was allowed to watch from behind the fence. In linear distance, watching from behind the fence was actually closer to the band members than from where I was in the bleachers. I also witnessed random members of the public exercising on the track during marching band practice. So I assume I could spectate even closer to the band inside the fence as long as I was actively exercising? When band camp was in session, there were at least 20 people spectating from the sidewalk near the tennis courts at the end of practice and no one was asked to leave or even warned that this behavior was a virus spread risk. It absolutely boggles the mind that anyone is able to walk into a restaurant with a mask on, get escorted 10 feet away to a table, and promptly remove their mask, yet sitting atop the bleachers during outdoor marching band practice is prohibited. Similarly, it is my understanding that football will be starting soon where parents of players will be the only allowed attendees. I can only surmise that this virus is less likely to spread from football spectators to the players than it is from band spectators towards musicians? How does that work? Going forward, for each and every policy decision made in the name of preventing students and faculty from contracting COVID-19, please list the scientific background that drove this specific policy decision. If decisions are made without having scientific background, they are simply arbitrary rules that sound like they make sense, but in fact, they have absolutely no effect on the spread of this virus. Please make policy decisions that aren't embarrassing to say out loud. The next one is from Michelle Marquina. And Michelle says, I would like to ask the board to reconsider allowing elementary children the option to return to school for in-person learning. The current remote learning option is not working for so many families. The technology issues alone are causing kids to miss out on learning, which is putting our children even farther behind. Private schools and even some of the local public schools are making it work. We need to do better and provide in-person learning. If Troy can go back to school in two weeks, then so can Lake Orion. Next is public comment from Kristen Anderson. Kristen says, good evening. We are in week two of remote learning. The teachers are doing the best they can, but I am seeing my children struggle on a daily basis for a variety of different reasons, academic and social-emotional. Zoom is still an issue as it is still not working for them to its fullest potential. Will it ever? My hope is that Lake Orion's administration and schools' boards' eyes and ears are open, that you are looking around, seeing that for the most part, those that are back in a face-to-face environment are making it work and doing so successfully. Listening to other districts that are currently remote, but moving back to a face-to-face or hybrid environment quicker than they thought they would. I am hopeful that Lake Orion will think about and entertain the possibility of doing the same thing and put kids back in a face-to-face environment before the beginning of November. Our kids deserve and need it. And our final comment for tonight is from Paul Thompson and Paul simply says, elementary school kids need to go back in school. elementary school kids need to go back in school full-time. Remote learning is not only less effective for the children, it is a severe burden on the parents that are working full-time.
Thank you, Bergit. And the board appreciates feedback from the community and will certainly take that in consideration. That closes public participation, and we'll move to strategic area discussion items, beginning with governance and the superintendent update. Ben?
All right, thank you very much. I just have a few brief pieces that I wanted to share about legislation. Just in the day, there's not a lot of details yet on the budget for 2021, but we did get some assurances that there will be no reduction in funding for K-12 schools for that budget. As John says, we'll wait and see what actually comes in the payments before we get too excited about it, but that is encouraging news, and hopefully that is what ends up happening. Michigan High School Athletic Association, as many of you know, has moved forward with their sports seasons and tournaments in their normal seasons after some changes with the recent executive order. They've established protocols for safety, just to let people know that each participant gets two spectators for the athletic events. And us as a district hosting these events, we are obligated to make sure that the executive order is being followed. I believe somebody had talked a little bit about that during the public comment or public participation. Executive Order 180 states that the face coverings must be worn at all times by athletes during the training, practicing, and competing in those sports when they can't maintain six feet of social distance except for some fleeting moments and occasional separations. So there has been clarification on that. Chris Bell has worked well to communicate with families during those events to understand what their participants need to do. Obviously, we have a football game coming up this week, and he has, I believe, we've sent on information to you as a board as to what that will look like so that everybody understands, you know, what it is that we will be forced to do as far as hosting this event. You know, we can't be allowing, you know, public gatherings outside of the fences watching, you know, football games and things like that. We're asked to maintain that, so we'll be doing our best effort to follow the executive order. Also, I wanted to share that the USDA extended the federal waiver for the summer food program, which makes all the students eligible for both breakfast and lunch, and those programs have, that program has started in over the last couple of weeks, and the numbers have been good and increasing a bit. So it's encouraging that families are taking advantage of that opportunity and flexibility that has been offered. There was a website that went live, I believe, yesterday at the state level that shares the COVID-19 outbreaks in schools across our state. Just so that people understand, each health department, from my understanding and talking to the health department, is determining what gets a school on that list, and Oakland County Health Department is reporting when there are, when there's two cases or more that are related, interrelated to one another outside of a household, and they also can evidence that it was transmitted through school attendance or programming. So I thought that that was really, you know, important to understand how that is getting, you know, recognized as it goes on that dashboard. Also, real important to note is that most of the outbreaks, you know, that we're seeing, the large outbreaks obviously are in the college, in the college atmosphere and environment, and that really goes to show, you know, when we look at some of the data that Oakland County has been presenting to us also on a weekly basis. As far as special education programming, we talked a little bit about this at the last board meeting, but I did want to share with the board, as I said that I would, that the categorical classrooms across our district started yesterday, and things have been going well. And so what I mean by that is we've been doing some in-person instruction starting yesterday with these students, and they've been, you know, going to a number of our facilities. And again, things are going well. Transportation, we've been starting to use the buses to do that, and that has really helped us as far as making progress towards what things will look like with transportation with all of our students as we continue to move forward. The, we also will be running all of our programs next week at Pine Tree. So looking forward to that. You know, by the end of next week, we'll have a significant number of students that will be in the facilities. So there are a number of districts that are looking to us as to how to, you know, implement their special education program in this type of environment. And, you know, so we've been helping some other districts be able to implement that as well. I did want to mention that this Friday, September 18th, we're going to be promoting what's called a Going Gold for Childhood Cancer. September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. We do have a student that's going to be starting at Blanche Sims this year, did start this year. And so we definitely want to try to support that student as well as, you know, all students that are suffering with this dreadful disease of cancer, and we'll be getting some information out on social media to promote this, and really looking forward to some district-wide participation in this Going Gold for Childhood Cancer opportunity for us. Blanche Sims specifically will be doing some additional messaging and some programs that they'll be doing to support as well. So just wanted to share about the COVID-19 update. I returned to school. I had shared with the board that each board meeting will give, you know, some updates and let you know where we're at. First, I want to recognize, you know, the public comment. We really appreciate, you know, the comments. You know, not only those that have provided comments here this evening at the meeting, but the emails and things of that nature that we've received. You know, kind of the same thing. We get, we get, this is really going well, and we get, you know, some of the barriers that families are facing that we're helping them overcome as well. And so we'll continue to do that. We certainly want to make, you know, this education opportunity a great experience for all. I can't emphasize enough that over the last four weeks, the relationship with the Oakland County Health Department has gotten stronger and stronger. What they have shared with us information-wise has been extremely impactful, not only for me, but for all of the superintendents across the county in really understanding the impact of the virus. The information that we're getting now is so much more helpful than where we were at six, eight weeks ago. And so that's really important as we, you know, make these decisions moving forward to understand that learning continuum that has been occurring with all of our superintendents as we're making these very difficult decisions. I want to emphasize as we go through and make the decision about when, you know, we can return or start to offer the in-person instruction. Some of the steps that we're taking or that I'm taking in our district to lead our district is that I meet with all of the Oakland County superintendents on a weekly basis. And also, I have another meeting during the week that we're doing on a weekly basis with a northern group of superintendents. And during that time with the northern superintendents, we actually are talking with the county epidemiologist, and we're really getting a lot of great information that helps not only what's happening in the county, but what's happening in our district, and that's what's most important to me is to understand what the trends are in our district so that we can make decisions that are, you know, relevant to, you know, our students and our staff. We also meet with the Oakland County Health Department on a weekly basis, and that too is a broader perspective, helps us understand what the county is experiencing, and then also what types of resources are available for our families, for our staff, and for our school district to move forward. We're all working together to try to get an in-person learning opportunity as soon as possible, and that we will continue to trend in that direction as long as the positive environment continues. One other advisory council that I wanted to share that I want to make sure that people understand is that we're working with Lake Orion medical practitioners. That includes doctors, disease specialists, social worker, counselor. And basically, I'm meeting with them on a weekly basis, and we're basically getting feedback to understand how the remote learning environment, how the virus is impacting families. That helps us respond accordingly, and it also helps us give those providers, you know, some of the resources and some ways that we're helping troubleshoot. And so that's been a really valuable partnership, and I will continue to use that. We have a standing meeting through the month of December, not in an attempt to keep students out of school, but to continue to understand how our community is reacting to, you know, the virus and the environment that we're currently in. So I'm really appreciative of that, that group. We get statistics by age span, which is really important in our decision-making. So three weeks ago, I talked a little bit about the fact that our high school really had seen some spikes and some increases in the numbers. So we get that on a weekly basis, so I'm able to get that information and understand where our students are as far as the number of positive tests and how they're impacted. We get the statistics by school district, and hopefully people are following that. But what you have seen over the last two weeks is some positive trends, and I'm very encouraged by that. We were at seventeen point two originally, which was four weeks ago. Then we moved to a twenty-one point one. These are cases out of ten thousand, as reported by the Oakland County Health Department. And then two weeks ago, we got a drop down to fourteen point five, which was a very positive trend. And then last week's report was at eight. So when meeting with the epidemiologist today, she feels as though that number is going to maintain or stay very close, which will be very encouraging. By Saturday, we will have the full impact of Labor Day as far as the, you know, the virus and the impact that it would have on our community. So very, you know, encouraged by that. I encourage people to continue to look at the COVID-19 dashboard for the Oakland County Health Department. People ask about the science and whatnot, but those are the numbers and the statistics and the narrative that we are going by as that is the information that is relevant to our county and to our area. I oftentimes get challenged, what is that one metric? What is that one metric that you're looking at to make that decision? And, you know, as I've discussed, there is no one metric. There's a number of them, and I'm kind of working through right now to help you understand some of the information that we gather when making that decision. When I turn that question around and ask people what one metric that they would expect me to look at, there really isn't a good answer, and I share that because there really isn't one good metric to look at. And I've yet to hear anybody say anything about what one metric would be that is a surefire way to move forward with continuation of our programming. I talked about the hospitalizations, that that would be an important factor to consider. That's in a great situation right now as far as, you know, capacity if there is an outbreak. So that isn't a concern. The testing link has improved, so now it only takes approximately forty-eight hours to get test results back. That really helps us, that helps us as a school district for contact tracing, so that's a positive trend. The number of deaths that are being experienced by COVID-19 has decreased quite a bit as well, and that's not a great metric, but it's just one that we have, that we've been keeping track of as well. And that too is showing some positive trends. I do look at the Harvard statistics. I look at that on a weekly basis when I get the school district data as well. That still shows that we're, you know, maintaining and doing a good job as far as positive trends. I believe we were at three point three last week when I looked at that going from memory. So we need to continue to see these positive trends. Again, our purpose when we're making the decisions is really what can we do to maintain a continuity of learning for our students? That's what's absolutely essential, and that is really the crux of, you know, along with the safety of the decisions that we have been making and will continue to make. We really want to make sure we have a continuity of learning for our students. Each of the administrators on this meeting tonight, you know, we've all been going through the buildings, getting feedback from staff, just, you know, as you probably are with staff and community, you know, about their readiness, about how they're, you know, viewing the remote learning experience and how we can make that better. Regardless of what we're in, we want to make sure that it gets better every single day, whether we're in in-person or we're in the remote learning environment. I did want to mention one thing about the Dragons Den. Again, that was a response to some need by the district. I believe we ended up with either sixty-four or sixty-nine students. I think it's just really important for me to emphasize that the programming cost of Dragons Den compared to the fees that we are charging families to bring back, you know, unemployed workers, there's a difference of eight dollars, eight dollars total for each, you know, student per week when we're looking at it. And that's not considering the incidental cost of, you know, the electricity and the cleaning and all those things that you typically, you know, consider. So it's certainly not a cost savings. It was certainly something we were doing to try to support families in this very difficult time. And so I just wanted to make sure we, you know, address that. As we make these decisions moving forward, which next week on the 23rd, we will be bringing our, our plan forward again and really looking at how to get our students back in person sooner than November 9th. Some of our students, I want to be clear on that. We want to be really intentional. We want to be purposeful, and we want to make sure that we're addressing the needs of our early learners. We really think that that is the, the group that is, that we need to get back, you know, sooner, sooner than later. But it's really important to understand, members of the board, I just really can't emphasize you enough that when we make these changes, it's really like starting up a whole new school year. And it is very, it is very challenging when we look at the staffing changes. So what's going to happen when we make our changes to move back to an in-person option? We first have to find out how many families want Dragon Virtual. So once we find out how many families want Dragon Virtual, that will then dictate our staffing. So we have to have a certain number of staff that can do Dragon Virtual, and then that also helps us with class size understanding and so on. So we really have to reassign all of our staff when we, each time we make these changes. And so, and we do anticipate making some changes in the near future. But all of those staff, we will be shuffling, and the teachers or students currently have those, you know, some of those are going to be changing because we do have to have, and we've talked about this, but I'm not sure people have remembered that. But we do have to do some staff changes in order to accomplish the education of all of our students in our districts. And we really think that that's really important to understand as we make these transitions. We also had a large influx of students that added that last week, especially the young students in kindergarten that added that last week prior to school starting. And so we have some class size numbers that aren't typical or ordinary, which we're glad that the families are entrusting us to educate their children. But what that caused is some class sizes that were not, you know, normal for us. So we're going to be adding some staff. So we're trying to balance all of that so that we don't change classes and then have to change classes again when we move to an in-person. So we're working really hard to try to understand how to do that best and less impact the students a lot less. Had a great meeting today with our leadership team, who just a great bunch of thinkers and two really want to make sure that we're doing a great job for our students. We also are really going to be evaluating the commitment to Dragon Virtual that families are going to be required to make in order for them to move forward with Dragon Virtual. Because again, every time we make a transition with the student, it could impact all of our students. For example, if we, after five weeks, allow families to, and it's just an arbitrary number, but if we allow students to move back to an in-person environment if they were in Dragon Virtual, because now they feel more comfortable coming into that environment, that's going to change class sizes. That's going to change in both virtual and in-person. We may be in a situation where we have to reshuffle staff again at grade levels, and we want to avoid that as much as possible. So that's one of the things that the team is really working through before we get to, you know, next Wednesday and rolling out our program moving forward, is how to lessen the number of transitions our students are going to experience because we know that the relationships are already being built, they'll continue to be built, and we don't want them to have to restart, you know, multiple times in a year, which some of it's going to be unavoidable, but that's, that's where we're at. Transportation services, I think it's important to understand that right now we are, we have some incredibly unique routes for our special education programming. As I mentioned earlier, we have a number of our special education students in now, and by the end of next week, it'd be many more. But there are very specific routes that we've created. Once we bring back more students, those routes will again have to be completely reshuffled to accommodate and bring our students back. And then food service, we- And then food service, we, I talked about the summer flexibility that's been added, which has been wonderful as far as providing the opportunity. But understand, once we do that now, and we bring students in to an in-person environment, now we have the situation where we have students in eating their meals, plus we have, if we still have some other students out, that opportunity for students to come and get the food at the scheduled points in time as well. So there's a lot that goes into these decisions and I just, I, I can't emphasize enough that it's not as easy as, hey, things are looking good after a couple of weeks. Let's line up the buses on Monday and we'll start bringing kids back to school. But the planning is in place and we are working and I'm just trying to articulate what some of the things are that we're going to be working through. I want to mention, just as a reminder to the board as we go through this, that the virtual programming, the Dragon Virtual, we've been calling it at the elementary, looks a lot like our remote learning does now, but at the secondary, it looks completely different. And one of the things that we've been really, really working hard to try to do that, that our team has been trying to do is really make that a great experience if families are making that choice to keep their, their, you know, students in a virtual environment by giving them the curriculum at Lake Orion Community Schools. And we'll, we feel strongly that we can deliver that model at the elementary level. The secondary level will likely look different as far as the Lake Orion, you know, curriculum compared to what a virtual model will look like. And many virtual models across our state aren't, aren't at a unique curriculum based on their district. They are vendor provided, they're pre, you know, pre-taught and recorded. And that's why a lot of districts can just quickly do that. And we've been working really hard to make that a robust virtual experience. And we're really evaluating that to make sure that we can, you know, provide a good program at all levels and it may not look the same at each level. And ultimately, you know, at Wednesday, after we roll out, you know, what our plan will be moving forward. And again, we're very much looking forward to getting our students back to an in-person environment, certainly our early learners. When we roll out that we're going to be looking for Dragon Virtual registrations, it'll be a shortened time period. So it's going to be really important for families to understand and, and watch the social media blast with the board meeting next week. So that they understand what that window of time is, you know, it could be as many, as short as, you know, three workdays. But we really feel like, you know, families have kind of been going through this and they want, they know already whether or not they're comfortable sending their students back to an in-person environment or not. But that's going to be the crux of everything as far as who's being taught by whom and where and all of that is the number of students in Dragon Virtuals at all levels. So that's going to be the first big piece of data that will get our, our staff shuffling. And then from that time point, it's going to take us a few weeks at least to get everything in place and make sure that we're able to move, move forward to educate our students. So. But again, next week on the twenty third, we will be providing a plan to get, you know, more of our students back to an in-person environment sooner than the November ninth is what we're, you know, planning for at this point. We, we really feel like we're going to be able to do, do that with our younger learners. It's just a matter of how, how we do that. And so I just, I can't emphasize enough, yeah, this is a responsibility that I have as your superintendent and, you know, we're making decisions for over seven thousand people. Do not take that responsibility lightly and have been working very hard to understand the best possible on how to continue the learning for our students. And appreciate the patience and all the communication that people have had. And I understand that people are ready to get back to normal. Trust me, I am too. And we want to make sure that we're doing it in a, in a responsible way and in a way that, you know, we can still make a difference. So. That is my update that I wanted to share and be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Ben? Yes, Bergit.
Thank you for all the information, Ben. I do have a couple of questions of clarification, if you don't mind. One of them is just so that everyone is on the same page. When you say early learners, getting them back to school, can you clarify, is that K five?
To me, that's what an early learner, yeah. I, I think it's fair to say and I, you know, part of it, Bergit, is our team needs to really work out the details. So, you know, I say K five and then if it looks different than, and again, I'm, I'm going to have the details next week. But there's a lot of models and I know you've seen those models, you know, some are the DK through one, come back, you know, at this time. And then it's, you know, two, three, come back at a time, you know, so we need to, based on all of those things that I talked about, how can we do it well? And then, and then move that forward. So I'm not ready to tell you that it's going to be which grades next week. We'll be talking about the specifics. And I can tell you right now, some of our administrators that are listening are really uncomfortable because they're going, oh my gosh, you know, we can't, you know, be guaranteeing things. Those are what our plans are, is to get our elementary kids serviced in an in-person environment as soon as we can realistically with our operations that we have to consider as well.
Well, I appreciate that very much. And I have the utmost of respect for the fact that you're presenting your plan next week. I just didn't want people to make assumptions with the early learner title. So thank you for a little bit of clarification on that. If I may also go back to the comments you made about kindergarten. It's not been uncommon in my table on the board for us to have an influx of kindergarten registrants right as school begins. And I'm guessing, did I hear you say that's what happened?
Yes, I did say that. Yep.
And can you, do you have a ballpark of numbers for me or for us?
I think Rick probably, because the guy doesn't sleep because we're having to, you know, work so many hours, including this past weekend. He probably knows those numbers. So Rick, if you could chime in, I appreciate.
I can give you a ballpark and you're right, Bergit, on a typical year, we may see an influx of, I'll say twenty to thirty late registrants. We saw an influx this year in a less than two week period of over a hundred and fifty.
Wow, that's a lot. I know that we had, if I recall correctly, and I may be off base on this, but I know that we had lost with somebody in one of our meetings had spoken or addressed the fact that we were down in our K numbers from what we were anticipating. So did that kind of level it back out or is it more than you thought?
We are working our way back towards our projected enrollment numbers for kindergarten. But we're still not at where we anticipated to be pre-COVID. Rough numbers, we were projecting around four eighty. Point about three weeks ago, we had less than two fifty to two seventy-five range. We're in the mid threes now and I'm just giving rough numbers, but we're still significantly lower than what we had hoped to have.
And Bergit, if I could, if I could add on to that, which I think is really important to understand, and I know part of the reason it becomes a question is, is that is such a, an important factor for funding. And so the state had, has shared that we're at seventy-five percent of this, of the blended count from the previous year and twenty-five percent this year. So the, the amount becomes less. Certainly we want to have, we want to have a hundred percent of all of our in-district students and then some to make a difference with through education. And we will continue to strive in that direction, but I just want to make sure that that's clear as far as the funding piece of it because it is so important.
Bergit, I can give.
Go ahead.
Nineteen enroll in one kindergarten in one building in a three-day period, which is almost a full section.
Right. Right. Interesting. Good news. And then.
As I shared with our administrators, the good news is we had this influx of kindergartners. The bad news is we had this influx of kindergartners because we, we had to scramble, you know, last minute to try to figure out how to service all those kids. So.
Absolutely.
One of the things that I just want to add, one of the things that we're, that we're working through, we, I don't know, it was two and a half, three hour meeting today, is if we add that staff, that's going to change the teachers for a number of kids. And so then if we, when we go back to our in-person and Dragon Virtual, again, our staff is going to change. And to me, to have three changes was something we needed to work through so that it didn't occur for our, our youngest students. So. Rick's right, it's great news or good news and bad news all in one.
Complicated. I have one more question for now. I'll never shut the door on that. Ben, you had talked about in your update for special ed that the categorical classroom started yesterday with in-person instruction and busing. And it was, it was good to see buses on the road. And that next week, pine trees opening. Can you share with me a little bit more, share with us? I know that all students are every day in special ed is, are, is that, or are they? Are there some kids coming some days of the week for some of the, the more support type services?
Yeah, so it is, one, I could never memorize it because it's significant. The, the creativity that our special education department, including the director, including all the teachers that they came up with to service the students in their contingency learning plans is really quite amazing. But to answer your question, just in simple terms, it is not every day. And it is a number of different groupings. So I really don't have a great answer for it. There's no great answer. But they're all being serviced through these contingency learning plans that they have worked with families on. So the families are all on the same page as to what the learning is going to be to address the needs of the students.
Very good.
Good.
Thank you.
Steve had a.
Thank you, Bergit. Steve, you have a question? You're muted, Steve.
Thank you, Jim and Ben. But Ben did answer my question as I was waiting. Thank you.
Okay, great. Other questions for Ben? I know that there'll be more details next week. Scott.
Thank you very much, Ben. I guess my question is kind of along the lines of the football game. Is MHSAA offering any support as far as how that is possibly going to get policed? How that is going to, how you're going to keep people off the hill by the tennis courts and how you're going to keep people from driving by and sitting on the sidewalks? I just think that, that seems like a huge crowd control issue that, you know, an unfunded type thing.
So Scott, apparently you didn't see that as part of your job description, but we were looking forward to you. So there's a couple of things in play. One is the MHSAA, the other is the executive order. So the MHSAA has really guided us as far as how to operate a an event with our student athletes. And that's really what their focus is on. What they've turned over to us, which, you know, they're not going to be able to dictate all of that. But as far as a person or a, an organization that is hosting an event by executive order, we're responsible for that. So what that looks like for us, I have talked with Chris quite a bit. In essence, he's, he's going to have, don't hold me to the number, but I believe he said he was going to have six deputies that will be at the game. And their, their primary role, other than the ones, there'll be some that are inside the facility. There will be some on the outside that will be encouraging people to move along. As much as we, we hate to do that, it is a responsibility that we have to, to the executive order to make sure that we are making a concerted effort to follow the executive order. I think it's also important to understand and Mark has communicated out that there is a way to watch the games through streaming. Unfortunately, it's a subscription base. It looks like for the first couple of weeks, we were working with ON TV to try to figure out a way that it would be more cost friendly. I think it's a nine ninety-nine subscription for, for families that want to watch. But they're, they've got some staffing issues. It's not going to allow that to be an option, at least for the first couple of weeks. But that's, that's the reality of, of what we're dealing with.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Yes, Mary Jo.
Sorry. Ben, I'm going back to one of the public participation comments for a question. Marching band, that comes out of the umbrella of Chris at this point, right? It's in terms of procedures that need to be followed for marching band practices and things like that, if I remember from his.
No, no, it really doesn't. It falls under the, it falls under the district. Chris has been a good mentor. I would use that word. To how to, you know, process and things like that. I too heard the, you know, the, the public participation piece. I don't know the rest of the story and how all of that, you know, transpired and what that is. So, but no, it does not fall directly under Chris. He's simply a mentor.
Okay, so for something like that, would that fall under the executive order? That is how we develop those procedures for something like that, executive order or the CDC or the Oakland County Health?
Yeah, I'm assuming you're talking about, kind of making some leaps here. You're talking about the.
The person who wanted to watch marching band?
Right, so.
What, like what was the, yeah, what, what got us, what procedural pieces got us to the place where that is being enforced in that way?
Yeah, so taking everything that was read literally, that it occurred in that manner. I can only assume that whoever was responsible for the marching band practice event recognized the number of participants that they had in their band and that were there and recognize it couldn't have any additional. I have no idea. It could have been, you know, somebody just going for a walk that told the person to move along. I, I don't know who that was.
Right, yeah.
So, but that would be the only logical piece that I could come up with.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Ben? Okay, what, yes, Nate.
Yeah, I just, I have a, a short question. I don't know, Ben or, or Heidi, might, might be Rick. You know, totally recognizing that in the moment, how difficult this is and how challenging it is. There's also a mindset and a way of thinking of things that is difficult in the moment, but when we look forward, it becomes really powerful. And you'll hear, hear folks talk about don't squander a good disruption or a good downturn. And while we're looking at the way we've started the school year, I've seen our technology implementation, our adoption and our teachers utilizing the technology in ways that are almost unimaginable, the advances in, in what they're doing. And I'm curious to see how you've seen that adaption. And my thinking is that this is not wasted effort, that this jump in our ability to utilize technology and gain kids, that when we're through this, we're going to see real gains in it. While it's difficult in the moment, I keep trying to pick my head up and say, we'll get through this together. And it's not going to be regrettable, the amount of effort that's gone into the change here. And I'm just wondering, Heidi or Ben, if you might comment just on how you're seeing some of that shape up, especially compared to what you might have thought of the trajectory we were on prior.
Yeah, that is, there definitely is during this difficult situation, there are several silver linings, I think. And technology, we could argue whether that's a silver lining right now or not. We have had some technical difficulties. There's been no doubt about that. However, I will say that the integration of technology with our teaching with, during this pandemic time has grown exponentially. And you can talk to any teacher and they will tell you that. So that is one area that I will say, I think, you know, we're not going back for sure. You know, in regards to our, in regards to our technology. And honestly, I think that is, that is a positive of the difficult situation that we have gone through is we are light years ahead of where we typically would be because we've been forced to do it and that's been a good thing. And we've had to learn a lot in a very short period of time. And so that, I agree that that is, that's been a positive.
And, and you know, the professional development that our staff is getting is really, you know, really continually building that base. Nate, and you know, when I'm going around to the buildings, which I've really enjoyed doing, when I'm talking with the staff, they, they talk about how every day is getting better for them. You know, that's the word they use is better. And that's really encouraging because they're, they are looking at it as a positive. And I think your, your thinking around it is, you know, really valuable. And I appreciate the, the positive thought on it. And that's one that we, again, as we have educated over seven thousand kids, we have to keep that in mind. We know that there's been some, some hiccups and, you know, Heidi's talked about that a little bit with the technology and we're continuing to, you know, attack those things and then get better with it. But the instruction has really grown and, you know, we're all going to benefit from that for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it forward, Nate. It's a great point. Any other questions for Ben? Yes, Jake.
Yeah, the, the first one's a, a follow-up on Bergit's about counts. And maybe John, you could answer this or some of them. The kindergarten students that were enrolling, since they weren't enrolled last year, does that mean the funding tied to kindergarten students would be fully based on who? fully based on who shows up this year? Or are they looking back because we've obviously lost a cohort of 12th graders and are bringing in one of kindergartners? So how does that, do you know how that works under the, under the regulations?
It is, it is currently stands now, the, the count model is going to be that basically 75% of last year's total count, 25% of this year's new count. And this year's new count would be 90% of when the October count that's coming up here shortly. And 10% of last February's. And that number, we take 25% of and add it to 75% of last year's number. So in terms of our enrollment, particularly to the kindergarten side of things, it's gotten much better, but it's still down from what we expected. But because this current model of the 7525 is in place, we don't see it as being as damaging as it could be. The is, the assumption here is that the 7525 model will hold. There is some talk in the legislature of that may or may not change. But I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of push behind maintaining the 7525. Our normal model is 10% from last February, so last year's February count and 90% of this October. So from, and the thinking there is that if you are a district that's got to pick up in, in number of kids from prior year, you'll get some benefit under the 25% piece. But most districts are in the same boat that we are in terms of either it's unidentifiable at this point or more kids are going to be going probably in a temporary mode, going maybe to a private or some other form, homeschooling, where you wouldn't count them at all.
What, when is this fall count? And when does it happen? And when do we get the result of it?
Rick, I think it's the first week of October, if I remember right. We used to call it Fourth Friday, but it's really the first week of October.
Now, it's a Wednesday. Yeah. We still refer to it as Fourth Friday.
And it's actually a Wednesday?
Yes.
So in terms of the official audited number on that, it had two months to it. So as we go through the course of the year, they use, the state will use prior year numbers and do an estimate and fund us that model. And then when the numbers are audited, they become trueed out and tied up.
So just to, just to be clear, Ben, we're going to get paid for 75% of kids who already graduated last year because they were, they were part of our last year's count.
You can see it, you can phrase it that way.
Okay. All right. And then the other question, this is, is, is more to you, Ben. On, as you talk to other districts that have opened, we can learn both what is working and what isn't working. So have they addressed, have they brought up any concerns that make you, that push you towards being more hesitant? You know, that it doesn't confirm the progress towards opening, that, that it would make you more hesitant towards opening. So what, what have you learned? Because a few of our North Oakland County neighbors have opened.
Yes, they have. And that is, they are part of our weekly meetings that we've had. One of the districts has been open for three weeks. One's been open for two weeks. You know, some of the things that I, that I learned is, you know, that I'm going to share in a public meeting is that, you know, one of the districts, due to their enrollment and their facility size, they're able to in space, social distance wise, even at the high school level, six feet because of their facility space, based on the number of kids that they had. And that was really valuable to them to opening up. You know, that's, that's Brandon. You know, they have high, high school like for capacity of 1,500 and they have 780 kids or whatever it is, but they're able to do that with their facility space. So that's a really important factor when you look at it. It's, it's about the social distancing, the mask wearing and the cohorting. Those are really the big three keys. And so that was good for them. You know, I've talked with Oxford and he, he was part, he's been part of our meetings. He has shared a couple of things that, that I'm not really comfortable sharing here. But certainly they were learning points. And, and the reason I'm not comfortable sharing them is because it's very poignant as to what the cause of some of those challenges were. And that wouldn't be fair to that district and those particular individuals that it addresses. But it does help educate and inform us as we move forward as to obstacles that we need to think about. And that certainly, you know, will help us as we move forward. So great question. They're not going to be the only ones. You know, I have a number of people on the west side of the state too, that I've talked to. And, you know, we'll continue to learn from them. That is part of what we're doing on a daily basis.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Jake. Steve, you had an additional question?
I did, Jim. Thank you. And this is a follow-up to Jake's question. And I thank Jake for his very detailed question regarding the numbers. So if I could address this, Jim, to Rick and John. Even though it's impressive that we have the influx in numbers. And Rick, to you, because I want to know if there's any type of way. I guess there is a way. My concern is we want to, that's a great number that we're seeing. And then Jake asked a question as to when that number is counted per state, obviously for the finances for John. However, if it's an artificial hike in numbers, it's not fair to us. As Ben has indicated, we're scrambling to get ready for this influx. The hypothetical that I have, and I have no evidence of it, and I hope I'm wrong, is what if there, a lot of these private schools have waiting lists? It's what I've heard. And I, it's not hard evidence, but just common sense and what I've heard. If they have a waiting list, then the parents send their children in kindergarten to the public schools and then until they're called in. Now, how does that affect us or should be, be aware of that, Rick and John? Thank you.
I can take that. Steve, obviously, that's one of many scenarios that could play out. I would also turn that situation around, which we have seen, where some of those kindergarten enrollees have enrolled because they attempted an option other than ours and found it not to be what they were looking for or hoped for. So they had come back to us as well. And I think that's one of the difficulties in all of this. It really is a, a personal comfort level for all families and all kids. And parents are looking for what they feel is best and right for them. And we hope to be that for as many as we can. But there will be those that we're, we're just not going to be able to meet that comfort level as well. And I think vice versa, there are programs out there that aren't going to meet the comfort level where people are going to feel more comfortable with us as well. So Steve, it's really hard to track that or predict, predict that. All we can do is hope that we provide the best product possible and people want to be here.
I understand that, and yet I want to be prepared for one way or the other if we can. And that answers my question. Thank you. For example, at the last board meeting, I was concerned, I didn't say anything that the numbers were very low coming in. Or we were surprised, or I was surprised that they were low. And yet I was very happy to hear the influx number. Last year, I remember when the influx number was very high in comparison to other districts, we were very proud to broadcast what the exact numbers were. Yet last board meeting, when the numbers were on the low level, we didn't get specific numbers. And I didn't want to ask or I didn't want to intrude in that. But yet I am concerned about the numbers one way or the other. So we could plan, as Ben indicated, as the superintendent, we don't want to be surprised one way or the other. That's why I break it to, you know, I'm not trying to make a statement.
We, we, Steve, we would typically not give any enrollment updates until after count or right around count time, because numbers do fluctuate significantly from the start of school until count day. And I would also throw out there, Steve, that the kindergarten anomaly, if you would, is not unique to Lake Orion. I've had conversation with many colleagues from many districts. And across our entire region, we're seeing kindergarten families hesitating to enroll their children in this world that we live in now. So it's not unique to Lake Orion.
And we all understand that, Rick. I was just trying to understand and I thank you for the education. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, I, I'd just like to express my appreciation for the approach administrators are taking on this transition back to school, back to in-person school, that their acknowledgement of the many moving parts that are involved with making that transition correctly and not creating a number of false starts and adjustments along the way. That's the last thing that I think any child or family would want to encounter when we make the change. So to make the change smoothly and also take the learnings that we can garner from districts who took the plunge from the beginning and are learning while they're going along, we can avoid those pitfalls. And when we make the step that we can take those learnings along with all the multiple levels of preparation, so that we can make that smooth transition and make it what we want as our final product. So many thanks to all the administrators. Moving on to policies, we have a second reading tonight and Bergit or Jake?
Jake. Yeah, so last time we reviewed on policy 2226 or 2266, which is non-discrimination on the basis of sex and education programs and activities overview. So that is a replacement for policy 5517 dot zero two. Sexual violence, which, which will be eliminated. This is a mandatory policy on the Title IX regulations that the U.S. Department of Education Office of Civil Rights released in May of this year. We did discuss this last time, but we of course can open it up in this final reading for any further clarification.
Any questions for Jake? I think it's pretty straight away and we're mandated to do it. So off we go. Thank you very much. Move on to student achievement and Heidi, please.
All right, well, we are in our sixth day of school. And things are going pretty well. We have had some tech issues throughout the district. And we are continuing to deal with those, particularly in our three through five with some of our laptops. So families will be communicated with and we will be having hours in which families can bring their device back to the district. And we will have a team that will be working to incorporate a solution, at least on the district's end. We've also had an issue with Zoom. Zoom is continuing to work on their end. They have several engineers that are working at this point in time. So we are hoping that our district solution will take care of most of the issues. But we still have, we still are working with Zoom. So each day, things, you know, continue to get better. I do encourage families to continue to reach out specifically regarding any issues technology-wise. There will be communications coming. We are doing everything we can to support families with whatever they may need. We clearly understand that the remote is working for some families. And we also understand that it is also not for every student. We are doing the best that we, you know, we can do. And so we continue to make little tweaks based on the feedback. But everybody is different. And so it's very difficult to try to accommodate everyone in this remote setting. But we are doing the very best that we can do. The other thing that I would like to point out is that, you know, Ben had alluded that our special education, some of our students are back this week and more will be back next week. I just want to give a big shout out to the special education staff. They have really been working tirelessly to hold all of the IEP meetings that have needed to occur in order to bring some of our students back who qualify for services. So special thanks to them. Curriculum night, in fact, tonight is elementary curriculum night. And then we will be hosting middle school and high school as well virtually. But those are still taking place. So hopefully, everybody has received information on that and families will attend curriculum night. In addition, I do want to take a minute to share a document here. Ben had alluded to next week, we will be sharing our extended continuity plan. And so part of that plan is learning goals that we have to track. And so can everybody see this? Yes. Okay. Part of our, part of this plan is, as I said, oh boy, learning goals. And so I lost it. Sorry, one, one second. Okay, can you see that now? I, I'll try not to mess with it. And so this is something that our district has always done, as you know. We test our students three times a year and individually track their progress. This legislation is requiring districts to test their students in the middle and the end of the school year and report the progress on the group of students, on the cohort. I will tell you that this is a requirement, so we are following this. However, we go above and beyond this. We do beginning, middle and end of the year, and we track by individual student. We, we don't track by a group as they're requiring us to do. We take a look at every single individual student and where that student should be progressing. And if the student is not progressing at that particular time in the middle of the year, say for instance, then we look at intervention or what can we do to help that student make the progress that they need to make? So you will see that on this sheet here, and this will be included in the extended learning plan that you will see next week as well. However, the goals have to go to the ISD. And so you'll see here that the test that we use is FastBridge. And we will be monitoring all students K through eight. And we will be taking the mean scale score. And so what we did is we looked at this information where we were at last year. And we put the number of points that had increased or that had improved last year with this particular group of students. And we expect to at least improve by that same amount this year. So you will see it varies a little bit. It is for reading and math. We have kindergarten and first grade and then second through eighth grade. So you'll see for, you know, the, the points vary based on the grade level and then based on whether it's at the middle of the year or end of the year and the goal as well. So we will track this, but as I said, really, these are things that we do every quarter with every single student. We do it at the district level and we do it at the building and classroom level, again, to ensure our students are progressing. So that is part of the plan that we will be submitting to the ISD. Okay, and then all right, in regards to the 23rd, so next week, we'll be bringing you that plan along with, I'll be bringing you information on testing. College Board has provided us with a lot of information. So we will be, we, we have been preparing communications that will go out to families regarding state testing that some of our students missed last year, as well as some of our, you know, tests like PSAT and things. So I'll be bringing that to you next week. And then bond. Just so you know that we are continuing, once we get students back in person, we are going to continue with our elementary furniture pilot. We're halfway through. And so once students come back, we will be continuing that. I have reviewed all of the furniture layouts to make sure that they will meet social distancing. And I'm excited that we will be able to do that. So we're excited to get kids back and to test out the furniture. Again, I heard from one teacher today and the students have been commenting because she has been sitting around the room at different pieces of furniture. And they are excited that that is their classroom and can't wait to test out the furniture. So we're excited about that. And then we will be starting a furniture pilot at the secondary level. So more information. So more information will be coming on that, but I've just reviewed the plans and the furniture that was. That will be going into those pilots, again, making sure that we're able to social distance. And that is, that is the case. I was very relieved reviewing these plans. I cringe every time that I, I see dust straight in rows and we're just going back so many years. It just. It pains me. So I was, I was very excited to see that with the furniture that we have selected. And we're piloting, we will be able to social distance. And so I am excited about that because we do need to move forward. That is in our best students' interest. So that is great news. The other thing regarding Stadium and Paint Creek, those design committees are continuing. They've not met in a few weeks. However, I believe they are going to be on schedule to meet next week and they will start picking out. The design and the cabinetry of their office area. And so more. Finite details the team will be working on. So they are almost entering the fun stages of the design. And then Orion Oaks Carpenter and Weber are plugging right along. You see lots of work continuing to happen. One exciting thing happening this week is our smart boards are going in. At Orion Oaks and Carpenter. So that is very exciting. We can't wait to get students back in so that we can start using some of this equipment. And our early childhood center, if you have driven by the corner of Clarkston and Jocelyn, there is no doubt that a lot of progress is being made each and every day. So. Lots of exciting things happening in the bond world as well. Think that's.
Thank you, Heidi. Questions for Heidi? Scott?
Thanks, Heidi. Is there any, and this is more of a totally social media based question, just because I've read it as far as. And there was some in the public comment as far as the older devices that some of the younger kids have gotten. I know that there were some that were ordered that we were waiting on. Is there any kind of update for folks that we can give them?
Yeah, we are looking at the beginning of October. As you can imagine, we're not the only district. The whole state is, you know, behind on devices. So we knew that going in that we were going to be short. We did not know how many we were going to be short. One of the problems that we had was honestly getting some of the devices back from spring. Because those had to be updated and then turned back over to put back out. So. Several things again, as Ben alluded, you know, goes into a process and if everything doesn't flow just right. You know, there's, there's hiccups along the way. So there are students that do have older devices. And as soon as we get our new devices in, they will be swapped out.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hey, other questions for Heidi? Yes, Jake?
A question about the assessment. So you, you mentioned the, the, the number of points or that, that students need to progress. Is that a baseline that's, that's from a. Test that will happen in the next few weeks. When, when it's talking about the progress they'll make by the middle of the year and the end of the year. Is that a baseline from what we see? Now, because we don't really have one from the end of last year.
Right, we, it is an average score from last year. And then we also do, yes, it's an average score.
Right. And then for these fall assessments. How many students are being brought into the school? Grade levels, who, who's doing it remotely? Will the ones being brought in have the option for transportation or, you know, how is all that working?
I will have all that for you next week as part of the plan. That and we, we have to follow the social distancing. There will be a limited number of students for the testing. One thing I do want to point out is that. We have a graduation requirement of the test. However. This year we cannot require it. So that will be something that will be different for this year. However, obviously. We strongly encourage students to participate and take the test. The SAT.
Thank you, Jake. Burkitt, you had a question?
I do. Thank you. Thank you, Heidi, for the updates. I am also super excited that the furniture pilots will get going. I, I have cringed every time I've heard stories about Dustin Rose and everyone facing forward and. Thinking here we have all these grand plans with them doing best practices in the classroom. So that's, that's awesome. To go back to what Jake had just asked about, that was in my notes to talk about this, the reading, the particular page that you shared with us talked about reading scores. And as I recall, in the past, we often had goals for students that. Were broad enough to say, we'll show one year's growth, right? And that, to me, this is an upgrade from that. I, I want to think, do you look at it that way when you actually put a measure to it? Or is it virtually the same thing?
No, no, this is an upgrade, but this is again, I wouldn't call this the best upgrade. The upgrade is, and we've been doing this for a couple of years, is we actually have. Scores that we want individual students to meet by grade level by content. So again, I'm not a fan of measuring a whole group of students, taking the, you know, the average, I, you know. I want to zero in on the actual, you know, student by student. So. When we started off having to measure, measure student growth, you're right. It was, we originally said one year's worth of growth. And then what is one year's worth of growth? And so we have worked with our assessments and we have set a district standard of where we expect our students to be. At each particular grade level and at different times throughout the year. And then, of course, we measure that against the, you know, we have national scores that we look at too. But again, we're, we're hot, you know. We set our expectations higher than that.
Right, right. So you just said something that tweaked my interest because when you talked to Jake just a minute ago. When you said average score from last year, my head interpreted that as an individual average score from the previous year. So we're not looking at the student's average reading score from last year. We're looking at it as a composite from.
Yeah, it's, it's a whole, it's the whole grade level of students.
Okay, interesting. Okay. Good to know. Thank you for that explanation. The other thing I wanted to ask you about, and it's not exactly a question, it's, it's more of a statement. I'm pleased that we. I believe like we're in high school hosted ACT this past weekend. And I think that went well.
Yes, and we are trying to host a few more so that is more convenient for our students. So the information that I will be bringing you next week, you will see a few more dates. We, we have tried to get as many dates as we possibly could.
Well, it's outstanding because I know a lot of, there's a quite a bit of frustration with parents and students. Being able to get those in and they, just when they think they've got registered for one, it gets canceled. And that's been a challenge for, for families this year. So. Thanks. Kudos to, to the team for, for organizing that and actually making it happen. That's awesome. I think that's all I have for you, but I do have a curriculum committee report.
All right, please. Excuse me, Heidi, you're all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, we have a curriculum committee meeting and we met, we had met on Wednesday, September 2nd in the morning. And we discussed a couple of things. We discussed curriculum nights. Heidi alluded to the fact that. They are occurring, virtual curriculum nights are occurring. In fact, there's one tonight, I think tonight's is the high school. And elementary is tomorrow night and middle school is on the seventeenth Thursday night. And I happen to know some people who have managed to get sneak peeks before even tonight to see them on Power School. And there is a. Great, you have a fan club for these now. This may transform your curriculum nights. And, and see, here's the cool thing, Scott, you're, you're a high school parent. You, you, it's virtual, so you can go back. See, this is pre-recorded, right? So there's, there's some real, you talked about silver linings. There, there's some. Spread out amongst a lot of different areas in this, in this world we're in right now.
I am curious, I am curious to see if I'm going to hear from some secondary parents. Regarding the recording instead of having to go to the high school and go to each of the different classes. I, I've already heard a few inklings of. You know, if this goes well, maybe we should consider this. So I'm anxious to see once it really plays out, what, what families think.
What comes out of it? It will be interesting. So the other thing we discussed in our curriculum committee meeting is high school service learning requirements. And the fact that there are revisions that are being made as a result of the pandemic. The number of required hours is now being discussed overall, not necessarily due to the pandemic. Along with other organizations that also require service hours like the National Honor Society. The revisions will be coming to the board curriculum committee again, and then we'll be coming to the board at the end of September, which is next week. I'm assuming you're still on par for that.
That's what we're hoping for. The high school is trying to do a couple of things regarding the service learning. And I, I, I want to bring them all at once. And it is time that they be reviewed. We have heard several. Comments regarding possibly the number of hours, forty hours. Maybe we should take a look at that. And the other thing that we have heard is that if a student. You know, has to be the forty hours and then if they're part of National Honor Society and then if they're part of, you know, the Science. Honor Society, that all of these have different requirements. And it can become quite hefty for a student. So we're taking a wide look. It is time. And so hopefully I will be bringing that to you next week. And if not, then it will be the beginning of October. But we're trying to. We're trying to really take a look at the whole requirement now at this point in time.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, other questions regarding the curriculum committee? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to human resources and Rick.
Yes, we have before you a recommendation to hire for three new staff members. We have Mary Jo Dunn, high school Spanish teacher. Mary Jo recently finished her student teaching at, I'll call it the District to the North. We also have Teresa Floyd. Teresa will be serving as a speech pathologist. And she finished recently her clinical experiences at the District to the South. And lastly, we have Jennifer Schellenkirk and she will be at. Oakview as a science teacher and she comes to us with several years of experience as a science teacher in the Dearborn School District. So we're happy to have those individuals become part of our dragon family and. We look forward to meeting them more in person at a later date and hopefully all of you can as well.
Questions for Rick? Yes, Burkitt?
Thanks, Rick. You've been great at continuing to bring us high quality staff. I'm curious what you're finding out there now in this realm of teacher shortage. I've noticed. In the past few months, we've had several new graduates. How is that pool of candidates going and are we finding it to be more of the new graduate level?
I would say not necessarily any different than normal. We, we are still. Attracting applicants with years of experience, obviously. And we're still getting a decent pool of those recent grads. Timing is an issue, obviously, with us recently adding those sections that Ben mentioned earlier at the elementary. We'll be interviewing for those later this week. That candidate pool does show us a significant number of. First year or recent graduates, just because people are in the start of the school year, less likely to be looking at this point. So that pool is more saturated, I guess, if you would, of those who are recent graduates.
Thank you for that. Just curious to know how it's going.
Hey, thank you, Burkitt. Any other questions for Rick? Hearing none. Welcome to Mary Jo, Teresa and Jennifer. Glad you're here. All right, we'll move on to. Business and finance and John.
Good evening. Got one bid award on the agenda tonight. It is referred to as the Standard Monument Facility Signs Bid Award. Its scope is, really covers the equitable replacement for facility signage at all identified sites. That have similar signage size, operational scope and design. The specific schools in this award. Are, will be the early childhood slash Orion Oaks sign for the property there. Carpenter, Moose Tree, or excuse me, Weber slash Moose Tree signage. Paint Creek Stadium, Oakview, Scripps, Walden and Pine Tree. The high school has been specifically intentionally excluded. The rationale behind it is that the high school sign itself is substantially materially larger than this, this set of signs that were before you tonight. And beyond the size, size, beyond the size issue in terms of the signage yourself, there's, it's not been designed yet. It's scheduled as part of actually as the high school bond project later in scope. And then in terms of the actual placement of it, we have an ongoing easement issue that's. At some point it's going to get settled. Related to the placement of our sign. If we move the placement or if we keep it in the same place, we got to make some easement changes. So there's some timing issues there. But the actual pricing is set, set up to lock in pricing for the three signs at the buildings and sites that are under construction with the additional buildings. And the thinking behind it is an equitable application of signage across all the buildings. The RFP itself was advertised in unusual spots, the district website, local newspapers and on the state's Sigma website. On August eighteenth, we received seven proposals. All proposals reviewed to determine the completeness cost and compliance with the bid specifications. Funding for the projects are targeted to be coming out of the twenty twenty one sinking fund revenues. And the recommendation of course is to execute the contract with curb appeal concepts as the company. The amount of the contract is not to exceed two hundred and thirty nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety five thousand dollars with a contingency allocation of twenty three thousand, nine hundred and eighty for a project total of two hundred and. Excuse me, two hundred and, with that final page. Two hundred and sixty three thousand, seven seventy five. So from a perspective of the signage piece and. I did have a question in terms of the basis of the funding coming and being tied to the sinking fund world as opposed to bond proceeds. And just from, just from a recall, our recent history in terms of our bond program development from, from a district compiling point of view. When we, as a district went through the process of identifying what are the needs in terms of the district, district wide. If you recall, we had well in excess of three hundred million in, in estimated value of projects. From that point, we needed to retrofit that down to a level of one hundred and sixty million, which was a prior. Identified level through the board process. So the part of the process and one of the last waves to get there was to take the signage out because they originally were in that grouping. For further review and recommendation and possibly thinking in terms of the sinking fund itself down the road. So in terms of why it's there and from a good example of why it's being moved forward now. Think of the Carpenter sign that used to be out front of Carpenter that came out several months back. Now the timeline is beginning to meld all in my head between COVID activities and construction. That sign itself, like the vast majority of our signs, it could not be replaced in. It's based on its age and physical condition. It is vintage nineteen, it's got to be thirty years old. It's, it's, so in terms of. Moving district forward in terms of using them as communication pieces in terms of not paying people to go out and literally spend hours to put letters on signs. We got pricing on all, all of these buildings. We, we know that the timing on the high school. And even potentially the, the CIRC facility in terms of how they land in signage. Those are from a pricing point of view. We had the leverage to add them using the same pricing. We just aren't moving forward on them now for reasons previously stated. Any questions?
Questions for Jen? Yes, Burkitt?
So thank you, John, for those explanations and. Can you help me understand it a little better? It's clear to me the early childhood center in Orion Oaks, Carpenter and Weber and Moose Tree, because those are current. They're currently in progress, right? They're, they're up and coming. And so those, that signage is going in. Pretty quickly. For the rest of them, are they, yes, right?
Yes.
So for the rest of them, are they phased in then when they're on? Their, when their projects are going on, is that, is that how it's planned out? You have the contract now, but then they'll be.
Yeah, we've got the pricing locked in, the scheduling of them will match and mirror the, the scope of the projects of the individual buildings as they come up.
Got it.
Okay, other. With the, the high school kind of being the outlier. With the, the high school kind of being the outlier.
Other questions for Jen? Yes, Mary Jo.
John, this is just a quick, small one, it's on the bid page, on page forty-nine of our packet. I was just curious what the CM fee is.
Well, that's our construction manager's fee, so let's rewall. We have them break it all line item broken out, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Jen? Yes, Jake.
John, this isn't specifically on this topic, but in the next line, we, we're going to approve the bills of fourteen point six million. And that's a very large number. Would guess that's related to bond activities, you know, payments that we need to make. But I just wanted you to be able to weigh in on that before we went and approved such a very large payment of our bill, of our monthly bills.
Well, why don't we go to that item? And there is discussion period for that item before we vote on it.
That's fine.
That way we can, we can move to the consent agenda. So any other questions on the, on the signage? All right, that's great. All right, so we'll move to consent agenda, may have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the following consent agenda items. Approved payment of the August bills and the amount of fourteen million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. Approval minutes from the August twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty twenty, regular, and the September second, twenty twenty curriculum committee meetings. And also approve the Head Start Coordinator's report.
Thank you, is there support?
For?
Okay, any discussion? Jake, why don't you elaborate further?
Yeah, so fourteen point six million, we're a district that has an annual budget in the eighty million, ninety million dollar range. So when you divide that out, we normally are approving bills of six, seven million a month. So fourteen point six million jumps out. So just wanted John to have, to be able to explain why it is such a large number this month.
Absolutely, it, it is about fifty percent related to bond payments. So that line item and this process of the, of the consent agenda, those dollar amounts are total spending in the district. Typically, you're absolutely right, Jake, typically the general fund, the community service fund, and the food service funds, which are, are really three personnel and operating main funds. They run between six and seven million in total expenses on a monthly basis during this process. The balance there is tied to bond program.
Thank you, yep.
That was a good question, thank you, yes, Burgett.
I had a question, not for John on the consent agenda, but I think it should be for Heidi, as I have a question on the Head Start Coordinator's report. And I realized that the Head Start Coordinator's report is from August the third. So I found it interesting to read that it says, early Head Start is at full enrollment for the upcoming school year. Head Start and the Great Start programs are not full at this writing. Classroom sizes are capped at ten, as recommended by the Office of Head Start. Families may choose either face-to-face or remote learning per Office Head Start guidelines. At this writing, sixteen families have chosen remote services. I know, Heidi, that they, they just started yesterday, but I'm intrigued by the level of students, the age is, to do a remote on that, if, I would love for an update on that in the future.
Let's give it a few days.
Yeah, I saw me in the future. I know better, they started yesterday, so yeah, I would love to hear about what that looks like in the future. So thank you.
Great, all right, any other, any other discussion? Julie? Please.
Yes, Ms. Burchard?
Yes.
Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. Draco's?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer? You're muted.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion, the consent agenda is approved, we'll move on, may have a motion to approve policy revisions.
I move to approve their proposed revisions for board policies twenty-two sixty-six and fifty-five seventeen point zero-two as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Julie, please.
Burchard?
Yes.
Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. Draco's?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. Motion to approve the policy revisions is approved. May have a motion to approve certified new hires.
I move that we approve the three certified new hires as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Julie, please.
Ms. Burchard?
Yes.
Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. Draco's?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. Motion to approve certified new hires is approved. May have a motion to authorize bid award for electronic signage.
I move that we authorize administration to execute a contract with Curb Appeal Concepts Incorporated for monument signs at ten school buildings in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, with a contingency of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars for a total project allocation of two hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars as presented.
All right, thank you, is there support?
I support that.
Thank you, Julie, please.
Ms. Burchard?
Yes.
Mr. Buckey?
Yep.
Mr. Draco's?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. Motion to authorize bid award for electronic signage is approved. So our next item is future planning discussion items. And we have some, the opportunity to work with Johnson Vary this evening. But before we begin that, we're going to take a five-minute break. So it's now seven fifty-seven, we'll resume at eight oh two.
Seven fifty-eight.
Oh, excuse me, my computer's slow. So it's seven fifty-eight, we'll, we'll resume at eight oh three, yes, Ben.
Can I ask you, should you gavel out before we take the break?
Well, if we, if we amend the agenda.
Okay, I want to ask a question.
Yes, please.
I thought this person that was on, and then was put back in the waiting room, that we were streaming the, the meeting. Are we comfortable with the fact that we're going to record this and then post it for Opens Meeting Act?
Yes. That.
Right, but are we, no, I get that, but are we okay that we're not streaming live this video?
Yeah, it, it's beyond our control. Our recording will be posted as soon as it uploads from Zoom tonight, that's the best we can do. ON TV had three people working on it. And we're not able to successfully launch and connect and broadcast the meeting.
Is it possible to, if we stopped the recording now, took a break, and then started another recording up, would that allow us to put that, Mark, to put that up in the meantime? So people can, that were anticipating watching it, at least watch the part that they were interested in? And not have to wait until we finish this next part of the meeting?
It really takes quite a while to download, it can take up to thirty minutes. I've had it take sometimes, so I don't know if you really want to recess that long for that to happen.
No, I, I, I'm fine, if you're comfortable, I, I'm good with it.
Well, let me ask the board, do you want to conclude this meeting? It would, I would entertain a motion to amend the, the agenda so we can conclude the meeting, take the break, resume with a recording of the workshop.
I would so move.
Okay. So the motion is to conclude our meeting agenda. We would take a five-minute recess, and then we would resume with our workshop, which would also be recorded for playback at a future time, the same as our board meeting.
I support that motion.
Is there support, all right. Julie, could we have a roll call place?
Yes, Ms. Burchard?
Yes.
Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. Draco's?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes, all right, so that motion is approved, so let's go, let's continue with recap and next steps. And I'll turn that over to Ben.
Okay, so as far as recap and next steps, I, I don't have any additional information to bring back as, as far as next steps, we will on the twenty-third. At our next meeting, I have a detailed plan as far as moving forward, which we talked about early, early on.
And those are our next steps, so that's great, thank you. All right, closing comments, let's start with Jen.
Welcome aboard to our new employees.
Thank you, Rick.
The same, welcome aboard, and we'll keep moving forward.
Thank you, Heidi.
And I'll say ditto to that, and, and thank you to all of our staff for a great start to the school year and our families. I know it has not been easy, but we are all working together to get through this, so thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Ben, for the very detailed presentation tonight, thank you, Jim.
Jake?
I did want to welcome the new hires as well, and, and say, hey, this is our first meeting of the new school year. So different times than normal, but glad that our staff and our students are back learning. And, and, and we're all doing the best that we possibly can, and, and looking forward to continuing the progress as the weeks continue.
Okay, Mary Jo.
I would like to welcome the new staff as well. And I had a special fondness for the Mary Jo who graduated from Oakland University. The only thing she was missing was a degree in biology, to be me, so welcome to all of them. And also, just thank you, thank you, thank you to the staff and the families, you know, especially the staff. I know how much work you put in this summer, again, I've said before, I'm living your life, you know? I've been doing it for a few weeks now, I know how hard it is. And I know that you want what's best for our students, so just thank you for everything you're doing and all the work you're putting in, I know it's hard.
Thank you, Mary Jo, Burgett.
Thank you, I'm going to just write on Mary Jo's coattails and say a huge thank you to our staff. I, I've seen some of their posts on Facebook where they're just exhausted, and we're only, like Heidi said, we just finished day six. And I know it's been a challenge, and I just want to say the, on Twitter, I follow a gentleman named John Kuros, he's somebody I follow, and he made a statement on one of his tweets last week. It said, "Technology will not replace great teachers, but technology in the hands of great teachers can be transformational." And by the sounds of the update from Heidi, I see that, and Ben, I see that happening in our district. So immense respect and for our teachers and staff, and thank you for all you do. Shout out to the high school thespians for their performance at Wildwood this weekend of the Tempest. It was awesome, and it really did my heart good to see high schoolers in action doing what they love. I look forward to the students being able to do more of that kind of thing, doing their thing, whatever it is, a sport, a club. I also thank you, Ben, for acknowledging the Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and I want to draw a little attention to it as well. It was made, it was childhood, September's been designated as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month to bring awareness to childhood cancer, which remains the leading cause of death by disease for children under the age of fourteen. My nine years on the board, we've had several students have to battle this awful disease. And sadly, some have not survived. And currently, like many of you, I've been following the story of a mighty little warrior named Price Redman, who's diagnosed with stage four neuroblastoma two years ago. His battle continues, even as he is now a kindergartner at Williamson's Elementary. Price is an absolutely incredible boy, whose bravery and courage and stamina are awe-inspiring. Friday, September eighteenth is the official day of childhood cancer awareness. The Orient Township Board proclaimed September's Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Williamson's Elementary is designating their third Fridays of every September to be Childhood Cancer Awareness Day. And I want to encourage my colleagues to join me on Friday for making going gold for, for Price and all this, all these children have to file this wicked disease. Price is a mighty wagon, dragon warrior, and he's one of my heroes, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Burgett. Scott?
I'd just like to welcome the new employees. I'd like to thank Cabinet and Ben for all the work that you're doing. I know that we're moving forward, I know that it seems like it's a snail's pace, but thank you for all that you do. And let's keep going.
Thank you, Nate?
Just echoing the appreciation from others for Cabinet Administration, teachers, staff, and parents for trudging through it, welcome to the new folks, and also the students, right? They're leaning into something new and giving it their all and, and working hard. So encouragement to them for driving in and really taking care of, and taking responsibility for their learning, and pushing themselves in some unusual times.
Thank you, Nate. Ben, did you have anything else to add? I got you out of the Zoom rotation here.
Yeah, I had no problem. I definitely, I would just like to acknowledge that the, the work that we're doing is very complex. And, and when we add the additional and new options, it, it just magnifies that. We're moving in the right direction, and we look forward to making the steps as this continues to move in a positive direction. Many thanks to John, Heidi, Rick, and Pam, our Transportation Director, you know, for the work over the weekend to get all the special education routes finalized. Frankly, we were calling bus drivers back on Sunday. Drivers showed up on Monday morning to get their routes for the first time. And, you know, happily went and picked up our students. But that's the kind of work that's happening in the background that people don't recognize. Certainly Monday morning, it looks on the faces, it was easy to recognize the extra work. Also, thank you to the building administrators and the teachers, the support staff for the instructional delivery that's occurring in the remote while we're planning at the same time for all of our future changes. And lastly, thank you to the board for the conversations that we've been having, the feedback that we've received, so that we can make educated decisions as we move forward with our work educating students. So thank you, and, and certainly to the families. I know the sacrifice that they're making to support their students based on the delivery model has definitely been increased, and we appreciate the collaboration that we've received from them, thanks.
Thank you, Ben, yes, Julie?
We will have to go in under a different meeting link if we're going to resume this as a separate recording. So when you adjourn here, I am building another Zoom for the workshop portion of the meeting, and I will be emailing that to you. So you will have to go to your email to get into the next session.
Okay, thank you. And let me just add my appreciation, not only for the administrators and the staff, but also for the patience that our community has exhibited in this challenging effort that we're making to make education right for all the children in the district. And I had an opportunity to spend some time in buildings this week, and to see the effort of the, the staff working to make connections with students. And that actually happening was heartening to see. And I know that the next step is not far off, and, and I'm looking forward to that discussion next week. So with that, we are adjourned, and we will resume in, Julie, how soon will we have that opportunity to reconnect?
The link is out, I just emailed it to all of you, so.
Okay, so let's resume at eight fifteen. All right, thank you, we are adjourned.